All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Rockford Area School Board of Education. Today is Monday, August the 22nd, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM. And we'll call the meeting to order beginning with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Let's do a quick board role call. Brady Anderson.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Jenny Nealon.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Beth Frasca.
Here.
Amy Edwards. Here. We have full quorum of the board this evening. With that, I'll ask for our first agenda item, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Eric Gordy, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Nealon. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? I think no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda carries unanimously as presented. Next, moving on to item number three, which is our public comment portion of the meeting this evening. I'll read a brief statement as per our usual board operating norms. Public statement at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the Rockford Area School to address the school board. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves in the group they represent, if any. To ensure that all individuals have a chance to speak, speakers will be limited to one three-minute presentation. The public comment portion of a regular school board meeting is not a time to debate an issue, but for the board to hear comments from community members. It is important to remember that the board has a legal responsibility to protect the rights to privacy and due process for all employees and students. This means that both district policy and the Minnesota law prohibit public disclosure of matters that involve private data about students or employees, even without naming the student or employee in the session. This prohibition includes a public comment portion of a school board meeting. The board respects and values input on matters of concerns, but when they involve complaints about particular students or employees, such input must be heard and addressed by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. With that, I will ask if we have any public comments submitted this evening?
No.
No public comment has been submitted. All right. Public comment session is now closed. Moving on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion regarding your consent agenda this evening.
Eric Gordy, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy, a second by Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion or comment regarding the consent agenda presented this evening? I think no further comment or discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda items as presented carry unanimously. Moving on to number item number five A, which is our building and grounds report. Call upon our director of building and grounds, Mr. Luer. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Oh, you got me on top of this. That's, ooh, that's nice. I'm gonna try to stay on task tonight. Try to finish up with the buttons. First, I want to recognize an amazing custodial meeting staff I work with. I mean, these guys and gals get six months of work done in three months, and our building's interior looked amazing. Probably, probably the floors this year, the thing that really stand out to me is they just look like glass. And they work hard every day. And I, I've always said this. I'll put this crew up against a crew that I've worked with in the past. From 25 to 35 people I've worked with in the past, these 10, 12 people who just move mountains are great people. They did a great job with our playfields, grounds-wise. Probably looked the best that I can recall. Had another drought year, but again, everything looked pretty nice. Summer crew, I would say summer crew have been here four years, and this is probably the best summer crew I've ever worked with. From the college kids to the high school kids that graduated, that are not going to college and stuff. They just got stuff done. They, and no questions asked. You ask them to do some things, and they just went and did it. Worked very hard. Still had a little tough time. You know, it's like one of those things where you try to teach someone how to run a shovel. Had a little tough time with some weed whip stuff that you need to work on a little bit harder. We'll get there. Who wants the weed whip, right? So, summer crew, the summer crew worked on some venue landscaping projects just to try to, some of the things we wanted to do last year were so hot. 90, 95, 90, 100 degrees. It's, it's hard to get anything done. This year, we started running into the same problem, but we got some of the things done, like some of the landscaping projects. Tore out a bunch of old bushes. I wanted to lay some sod in some of the areas, but it's hard to get some sod right now, just like everything else. And a roll of sod is like anywhere from $7 to $9 apiece. And it's just crazy. Called a couple sod companies, so. Front of Galaxy, I gotta get some sod down. We just got to bite the bullet and put some sod down there because we pull out some wood chips and stuff. But it's, it's just what we have to do. College kids did a lot of tree trimming over at the middle school. I feel, our field one now, that's gonna be the bus loop. We had a lot of garbage trees taken over our fence. And to the point where the trees have probably grown out into the space at least six to eight feet. And they did a great job of cutting all the trees down and stuff. It kinda looks nice. Actually, kinda nice on baseball, still there. We're, it's called path of growth, so. We did clean that area up. They worked very hard, got a lot of wood. And again, it's just like junk trees. Nothing really old or anything like that. They worked on projects such as, we had a problem at the middle school. It would be south side of the building, right? Just to the left of the DO. When we get heavy downpours, there's one plash in there that would always come, water would come flowing in. I got some pictures included in, in the packet that they dug some trenches and put in some riprap and, and planted some grass next to the building and had the water to flow, could get the water to flow away from the, the building to keep it from flooding there. Again, they did that when it was 90 degrees out. So, I'm like crazy and stuff, so. Worked great. A good cooperative that I asked the last, one of the last times I was here was to see if we could have an cooperation between renting a city building, like for $5 a year. We fixed that up. We painted that up. It's, it's a great collaboration between us and the city because now we have a place, obviously a decent place better than our last baseball shed we had over there, for Rod to store our stuff in. We don't have any power in the building. I don't know if we probably will, but it gives us a little bit more storage for baseball stuff and things going over there. And we can maybe keep a piece of equipment over there instead of driving back and forth. But Chris Larson took that project, one of the maintenance guys, and worked with the college kids and just, I mean, you can see some before picture and after picture. It looks really nice. Still waiting for a roofing contractor to give me back some price. And I gotta, I gotta call him because he seemed like a nice guy that I talked to. Mowing crew, like I said, they kept up mowing. We were in a drought. I put them on some landscaping projects. They did a great job with that. They just kept track. They, they, again, they kept track when the mowers needed their blades sharpened and they kept track when they needed to be oil changed and all that stuff. It just, it's a, as I say constantly, it's a great summer crew. I didn't have to micromanage them. I just, they just did it. Didn't have to tell them anything. They'd tell me, hey, we need some oil, or we need this or that. Can you get us some of this? And that's pretty good for college, high school, college kids to do that. This year, the maintenance staff, we, technology ordered a bunch of interactive boards that might have that wrong job, but kinda like screens like that, that we worked together to hang some up at the high school and the middle school. Got that completed. It's, it's gonna be a nice addition. We're finishing up some other, our items with technology and hanging some light boards and all that other stuff. It's, it's coming down to the wire. It's gonna be a pretty busy week this week. But as in schools, you just always, it's one thing you can do is not open the doors after Labor Day, so it's gonna be done one way or the other. It just gets done. These, this group that I work with just gets it done. We had a lot of projects inside the building. And again, we're starting to see a little bit of it taking place. One thing I wanted to do was replace some doors, which included some doors at the middle school. 27 to 30 week lead time. Then get some trickle down. There's, we finally got new doors here at the RCC, between the RCC and the high school, because they were pretty packed up. And I think that took us close to 43 weeks again. But we finally got probably six sets of doors throughout the district installed about a week ago. And we're still waiting on the other 30 sets that I ordered. Part of an LTFM project, mostly for the middle school. They're beat up pretty good. Supply chain's gonna affect us, so anything we've talked about in the future, even though it's now, it's stuff we need to start talking about and just keep moving forward with. Because unless things change, I don't wanna have to order something. Honestly, I'm still waiting for a new slide for the elementary school since December or something. We still haven't got it. And it's just crazy. So, we'll have to keep an eye on that as we do future projects. Had a lot of teacher movement this, this year. Teachers moved from the middle school. Some moved in the elementary, some moved in the high school. By the most sense I've been here, so. We did a lot of, you know, desks and boxes and chairs. And again, that's just added stuff that we end up doing. Not a big deal. It's just part of what we do. And again, like I said, nobody complained. They just did it. Hopefully, we don't get too many shocks from the staff back next, next week and go, that's not my room. That's not what I look like. That always comes up. We're, we're, we're just probably in the last two weeks, we started a pretty in-depth investigation on the RCC fieldhouse floor. We met last week with the original installer. And he, he came out and did some water tests and stuff. And again, there's some pictures I took of him there. And it's, it's what we've determined at this time, and we've got a ways to go yet. But what we determined, we determined at this time last week as we investigated, looked for moisture, all the bubbling that's taken place in the, in the fieldhouse is basically what, not the floor on top is failing, but the concrete's failing. So, for example, I mean, even if we still had five years left on that floor on top, we couldn't go out to the flooring company anyway because it's the concrete underneath that's popping. I called my, my guy I use a lot yesterday on Sunday to ask him, because I was giving my work report today. And I've asked him to stop out with his dad that's been in the concrete business for, it's gotta be these 40 years, just to look for some expertise, advice on what's going on with the concrete. And they're gonna stop out this week and we're gonna have a conversation. But working with ICS and talking to them, some of the loosening of the rubber is from this concrete guy. Call it the concrete popping. It's exactly what it looks like. It looks like the concrete left loose. There's no place for it to go, so bubbles. And that's where we're getting bubbles all over the place. What's causing that? That's the bigger investigation. I mean, he gave some examples that could cause it. It could be extra shale that they put in at the time that they poured it. When they poured it, it could have been a hot day in certain areas and it, and it got hot too fast and it didn't cool down fast enough, which could cause popping in, in the future. He said if there's a lot of rock in some of the areas where it popped, and again, I'm not blaming the company. I'm just giving you examples, is they might have not got the rocks down far enough in the concrete. They didn't trowel it enough to get it down. They got where the cream comes to the top. That can cause it, so. But we gotta figure out why it did it. So, one of the things we discussed and, and I suggested, I'm not gonna, let's get some cores in there. Just take some core samples down into the dirt. See if it's wet. See if we got water down there. Because in some of the pictures you'll see, we tore some of the places out, like the far side of the RCC. Me and Chris were the maintenance guys. We had everything we could do to pull back that floor. It was so adhered to the concrete. We were thinking, okay, that's the farthest part out there. There's water underneath. We're gonna have problems out there. Dries the bone, sealed tight to the concrete. So, it's like, okay, scratch your head. So, again, it's something we need to do now, in the next few months, and get it pinned down so we can fix it next spring, summer. If it's a major fix, it could take the system off for a month or so. If it's a minor fix, it could take the system off for a couple of weeks. So, we just gotta plan ahead, and we gotta make sure we get the product. Question for you today. Yeah?
Is that damage that we're seeing in the RCC, anything that warrants an insurance claim?
It would, that's a good question. It's something we should probably look into, Brady. But usually, and again, one of the worst, worst warranties or things you can do is go out to a concrete company. But insurance claim possibly, based on what the damage is or how it is. That's a good question. I could ask that. I'll talk to Ms. Dean afterward, I mean, tomorrow and see what, you know, we'll call the attorney and see.
Yeah, if it's gonna be, I mean. I can get it paid for, Brady, or at least partially paid for.
Exactly. Because it's not, anything we do is not gonna be cheap.
Yep, exactly. It looks expensive.
Just for an example, I'm just gonna throw numbers out there. I think four years ago when they looked at this process, or five years ago before I, right before I got here, they were looking at the process and they were throwing out numbers like $400,000 to do it. And now they're looking at, because of labor and everything else, they're looking at close to six or plus. So, the board will have to make some decisions in the future that ICS will bring back. And again, if we had a warranty on the floor, we wouldn't be able to collect because it just go out to the concrete company because it didn't, it didn't adhere. Some other things, we did some flooring in the district that needed some replacing. We did some, a bunch of painting this year. Tried to get some rooms caught up. And again, part of that process of where we were able to do a little catch-up is because the board, you know, approved that LTFM bonding and stuff. And then, so this year, we went right after it and was able to get caught up a little bit. Instead of painting five or seven rooms, we were able to paint maybe 25 rooms that have been really struggling the last, since I've been here, that, that didn't look so good, but. And we're starting to talk about roofing projects. But we got some caught up. We got, we got caught up on some projects. We got some caught up on some concrete exterior projects. There were some trip points. So, again, that LTFM bonding is working. It's working well. And I appreciate that support. Update on the parking lot out here. You can see that they came in yesterday and fog sealed it, which is the last process we need to do. I don't know if you've seen it when it was great. That was the rock and chip seal. Now, they came back in and fogged and sealed it yesterday. Told the company yesterday or the last week that we are not closing down that parking lot again. We did it too many times already. So, they're gonna paint at night and on weekends, and we're not paying a premium price on that. So, they're gonna figure that out. But they'll start painting. They thought they'd start painting here tonight or tomorrow night. It must not be tonight because they're gonna ask for lights. But they'll come in and they'll paint that. They'll paint them two parking lots in probably a night and a half, two nights, they'll be done. But when I wrote this report, we were, they were supposed to come between the 16th and 18th, but they didn't show up to do the fog seal and stripe and ran into weather problems. So, they came on on Sunday yesterday and fog sealed. So, it looked kinda really nice, you know, so. It looked nicer once it striped. We're not striped, but told the college kids that's the next step, was striping, and they go, are we doing that? I said, that's way over our heads. Playground project, when, again, when I wrote this was last week or, I don't know. Crystal started bugging me about two weeks ago. So, I started putting it together. But playground, at that time, our construction company, Blue Look, that we fired, was able to dig it out, like dig out the old one, or put in new footings for drainage. We got the drainage in. Now, we're waiting for our playground company that will be here Wednesday to install it. And then, our construction company, Blue Look, will follow up with putting the fill back in. It will be up and running since school starts. So, I feel pretty good about that. They're up and, they would be here a little bit earlier, but they're on like a massive project, safety, safety first. Playground company is a massive, same thing. They tore down like four or five playgrounds up north, and they're putting them back in together for the middle school district. So, they'll be here. Chief figured they'd be done by the end of the week and filling it up, so. Good thing that they showed up on time. They'll all work together. Bus loops. Middle school gave, we had a couple of hiccups that came. They were supposed to, they were supposed to land on the ground today. About a week ago, we had some issues with the engineer for the city who was giving us a little feedback that they didn't like this or that. And, and honestly, it's a good thing that we have, we've worked on a good working relationship with the city. And we made some phone calls and had a Zoom call, and we did some things. And at one point, they wanted us to add like 200 feet of drainage pipe at the middle school to go to one other drain pipe that would have probably killed the project because we wouldn't have enough money to do it. But we did a little study for them and they agreed to it. So, they actually showed up today. What they did today at middle school was start marking locates. And then they'll start putting up water erosion fence and stuff. So, they are, they're on, they're on the ground. They'll, I wouldn't be surprised if they start pushing dirt by the end of the week. They have a crew ready to go. And that's kind of exciting because we're gonna make progress. So, thankfully, we have everything worked out with the city and, you know, and they're paying attention. They're listening to us at some point. We appreciate their cooperation and help us move that forward. Elementary school, I believe is either next week or the week after Monday. They'll hit another crew, which they have, will be hitting the ground over here and start pushing over here. I know some of the things that's gone through everybody's mind right away is how we keeping the kids safe? We actually, we took some fence down at the middle school, and we're gonna have the construction company put it up from one corner of the building right along outskirts of the playground to the other corner of the building and just keep the kids away. It's gonna be five-foot fence, six-foot fence at least. So, they're gonna be, it's, they'll be protected. Nobody can be sneaking through and stuff. So, our first construction meeting is tomorrow after our LTFM meeting, so we get a pretty good hangout on safety because our number one goal is safety of that facilities, at both facilities. The bike racks that we received for our safer house of schools, says here it has been placed at the middle school. We haven't placed them yet. We got the pack report. We had to wait for the concrete to be set for at least 10 days. Otherwise, we could have popped that out with the anchors. So, we're gonna do that midweek this week. But there'll be three new bike racks at the middle school for the kids to get, park their bikes at, which will be nice because they just parked them in the grass now. Some old beat up bike racks. So, thanks to Safer Houses Schools for donating them to us. We didn't have to buy them, which was nice. To the, is it the ship grant? Yeah. So, that's another grant that we're working with the city on is, is some projects that we're talking about at the middle school, other greenhouse and stuff. If we were able to get some ship grant money that we can involve a bunch of people, you know, kids and stuff is maybe building some planters and stuff like that if we can get the funding from the ship grant. And that's a whole different thing that's not on here, and I'm not gonna go on about it. But it's, it, talking with the new principal, Earl Paul, we're on the same page, is get the community involved and get the community out and about and growing. And it's pretty exciting to talk with him, and he's got the same vision. And I always chuckle, in fact, Ms. Dean and I chuckled today about growing dirt. Here's a guy that grows dirt. This guy is a farmer and grows dirt and compost, and it's fun talking to him. So, he's, he's, he's a great addition, I think, to that school. Pretty exciting. We received again this year $2,000 grant from our workers' comp company. And we had some matching fund, which is great. Because one of the things that my biggest concern is that stairwell that's coming from the middle school down is keeping that clean. So, we bought, we're gonna buy some, probably about a 200-gallon tank with our brine that we use now with the city of, south of here, that we buy brine from. I don't know if I'm supposed to use names or not, but we're cooperating between them. But if we can get it, the plan is to put a tank right up there on top and hook power up to it with a key thing on it. And our custodial staff can spray the steps down right away and get it keep it dry. And, and so, that's my goal for that area. And then I'm also buying some, looking at, they make a 60-volt power shovel that will help us shovel the steps instead of hand shovel. It's a new thing that's out that I seen at one of our local companies. So, we're gonna use some of the money for that. And then I'm also ordering another sprayer for sidewalks and stuff. So, it was nice to receive that check in the mail. I didn't even know we received it until Sarah Puckin came to me and said, hey, you got a check for $2,000 from S F M. And it's like, oh, I guess they got the grant, so. And it's like, oh, I guess they got the grant, so that's a nice addition. And, you know, just to finish up on a couple of other things. Raw, Raw Sports, which covers all raw, they have a couple of different things that are going on on the building, or out the community that I'm aware of that I don't get too excited about until, you know, and they, we support them 100%, they got a lot of great ideas. If they can come up with the money, I support it. Anything they want to do, help do is build something or pay money to add something, it's great. But I don't get too excited until they raise the money or come forward with the money. Or come forward with the plans because I would bring to Ms. Dean's attention and Mr. Pratt's attention that this is what they want to do once they come forward with the money. But there is some fundraising going out there to do some stuff. And again, the money they raised, we probably could do four years ago, but since things cost so much more nowadays. I hope they don't get disappointed that they only raised half the money that they thought they could do the whole project. So I'm hoping the projects they slighted the money for, that they can get it done. But just want to make you aware that I'm aware that there's fundraising going out there. I'm aware of it, talked to both baseball and softball people about projects, so. We'll see, and I'll bring you more information or share it with Ms. Dean that this is the donations and stuff. And then last thing again, great staff I've worked for, they, they they're the ones that should be up here getting any type of recognition. None, none for me whatsoever, because alls I do is show up and make sure the buildings are open and if I write, had to write their checks, that's what I do. Cause they just run the place, they're, that's a great, great team. So I think I got everything covered, I went seven minutes. Any questions?
Any questions?
I think I covered everything, what's going on. Again, I'm, I'm excited about the bus loops. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of, lot of chaos the next, four to seven to fifteen days, but I think we'll get it done. And I think it's gonna be really nice once we get it done for the safety of our kids, it'll be really nice.
Does anybody have any questions? For Jim or Eric Altisaka, you two, do you have any additional things you want to underline from facilities committee or anything like that based on the points Jim's raised? Or Superintendent Dean just giving a minute of pause for that? Nope, nope, perfect, good.
That was a big update and it is gonna be really busy at the elementary and middle school in the coming days and weeks. A lot of chaos and a lot of those things too, so I'm grateful that the playground was able to be moved. We did celebrate that on the facilities committee this morning. Just because with everything going on, I mean, you just need to make sure that those things are in place for the teachers to have for their students and all of those sort of things. We can't be without that at the start of school. And so thanks for doing everything you can to mitigate the chaos, knowing that there's timeline issues because of supply chain and demand and all of that, so thank you. Yeah, Ms. Dean.
Thank you Chair Edwards, I just wanted to make the comment that I think Mr. Larson being a little bit modest because of all the things that he just talked about was really the leadership from his department and from him. Whether it's the construction of the playground or all the movements that we had with teachers this summer, moving from room to room and some of the internal construction projects, I just want to say thank you to Jim for really being that leader for, for the guys that he has under his leadership.
Wonderful, thank, thank you.
Sorry, one more quick comment of gratitude there, you know, it's, it's a lot of the little things that your staff does, you know, that makes the biggest difference to district. It's amazing, obviously, there's things under construction, but it, it really looks great from the parking lot to the inside of the buildings. So we really appreciate it and it, and it's little things that make a big difference. You know, my wife is a kindergarten teacher, she said the walls that got painted in her classroom are not just a plain white and so warm and welcoming and clean. And so there's a lot of appreciation from the staff that, that is coming from all the hard work. And, and the students, though they may not realize it, have appreciated it too much, so.
Thank you, yeah, they, they do a great job and I appreciate that comment. I'll share that with my staff, but.
Good.
Love your appreciation.
Thank you.
That's, that's done and I appreciate the nice comment, but I just have, I have to show up and they do all the work.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, on to item number 6A, which is the resolution of acknowledgement of contributions and donations. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution of acknowledgement of contributions.
I have a first from Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Praska, I have a first and a second, any further discussion or comments? Superintendent Dean, do you have any comments you want to make related to this?
Thank you Chair Edwards, no, no additional comments, as always, just very grateful for the generosity of this community. But I would bring your attention to the very last contribution and that is the three large boxes of school supplies. They were brought into the office and we're talking big boxes, just in three, one for each building. Just notebooks and, and markers and, and pins and paper. And it was just nice that someone chose to give us a supply for kiddos who come to school and, and are missing a few things. So again, just representative of, of this community.
Thank you. All right, I have an open motion on the floor, any other comments or discussion, otherwise I'll call for a vote. This is a roll call vote and I will begin with Brady Anderson.
Aye.
All right, Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Beth Praska.
Aye.
Jenny Neeland.
Aye.
Amy Edwards, aye, resolution carries unanimously. All right, next, moving on to item number 7A, which is the resolution to call for a general election. And in your board packet, you should see the resolution as presented with the candidates listed. And this is a formality that we must do by state statute in order to certify the next step in the election. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean if you've got additional insight to add.
Sure, just a, thank you Chair Edwards, just a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for switching the board meeting. We were scheduled to meet, of course, last Monday and due to the timeline set forth by the election board, we had to move it to this Monday. The process that we had to adhere to was the closing, if you will, of, of when we could accept nominations. That was last Tuesday. And then we also had to stay openly on Thursday evening, last Thursday, to accept any applicants who wanted to withdraw their application after submitting. So that was the purpose of postponing the board meeting from last Monday to this Monday, so we could bring forth this resolution with the final candidates. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Krista Larson for stepping in to this election situation. It is quite the ordeal because of course, we're dealing with two, two counties, Sanipan County and Wright County. And so managing the logistics and the timelines and just all the, the small little steps that are involved in a, in the election process. I really thank Krista for leaning into that challenge, especially not having it on her radar at the very beginning when we started the training. She did participate in the training as a backup and now she's finding herself in the front seat. So again, thank you Krista for, for stepping into that challenge. So this is a resolution and so we're asking for board to take action on the slate of school board candidates.
Great, thank you, any comments or questions? All right, without any comments or additional questions, this is a resolution, I would entertain a motion to begin with.
Motion to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members.
I have a first from Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Neeland, I have a first and a second, any further discussion or comments? I think no further discussion or comment, this is a resolution, so I am gonna call for a roll call vote. Beginning with Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Beth Praska.
Aye.
Brady Anderson.
Aye.
Jenny Neeland.
Aye.
Amy Edwards, aye, resolution carries unanimously as presented. Great, thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Next, moving on to item policy 731R. This is presented to us for discussion this evening. And I'll call upon our Director of Technology, oh, who's already at the podium, hello.
Good evening boys. Well, this is just again, a brief discussion on 731R. You should have a copy of that in your packet, the information security policy. So I'm not gonna go too far in depth in the, you know, the language of the policy itself. First up is next month I hope it's introduced to redact the policy, which is outdated and then replace it with the current one that's in your packet. And basically, what it does is we want to I want to overview policy at the district level from the school board. And then that will allow the district administration and myself to create protocols that we can keep up to date more timely. And I'll go through some of those protocols briefly here as I go. And the other thing that I want to kind of say is why? Well, why do we want to create a rock for policy that is not necessarily the Minnesota State School Board Association policy? Well, part of it is the laws have changed and the school board association, I don't think, has caught up with us just yet. So part of it is Cybersecurity Act of 2022 that President Biden signed last March. And basically that says that we are obligated to report any ransomware payments, et cetera, to, to the federal government. And we are, we should be following some CISA guidelines in terms of incident management. The public law 11747, which is the K-12 Cybersecurity Act of 2021, there's not a lot of teeth into that yet. But the government was set aside to study what we should be doing. The other part however, that it does is it pushes schools nationwide up into the public infrastructure, like local governments. So we are supposed to be following the federal guidelines for cybersecurity. And some of the other ones, the old time favorites that we don't, we have thought of, Greenwich pillar and the Homeland Security Act and as well as the Child Internet Protection Act from way back to 2000, the FCC rules, FERPA and the confidentiality of information, these laws have been around on the books for quite some time. State laws, ooh, I'm getting old. State laws, chapter 13 of state laws, the Data Privacy Act. And it is encompassing statewide, but you know, really pertains a lot to the activities that we do. I'm gonna get closer, I'm sorry. I'm getting old. So Minnesota statute, the 13 is at 835 or 895, says that we're supposed to conduct security assessments annually if we have, if we have private data and we do. Now, it does not say we have to go through an audit, it doesn't say we have to go, you know, spend a lot of money. But we are required to sit down and review security accounts, we're supposed to sit down and review our systems annually and, and document that we've done that to ensure the integrity of our, of our systems and data. The new law that came up, Minnesota statute 1332, the Educational Data or the Minnesota Sue Data Privacy Act, which was at least signed in May, June, by the governor. And that is one of the laws that we will be reporting to the parents within 30 days of the start of school. All of the applications that are used, in use by students for curriculum testing and assessments. We have to give the parents access to say a website of all the applications that we use. And we'll try and itemize the data that we're pulling for those apps as well. That will be quite the task because we are using hundreds of apps. iPads alone, I think I counted over a thousand. So we're gonna go through them because a lot of those iPad apps, you know, were 10 years old. And I'm guessing we're not using them anymore, so if we're not using them, we're just gonna dump them. So we don't have to report them or deal with them. Moving on, the classification of data, the access of data and an information security program, the bottom one, the Minnesota statute 68, that was passed in the last special session, last year, because there really wasn't a special session this year. And that one really pertains to insurance companies and the mandates that they are supposed to follow for us to get insurance. So in that roundabout way or that quiet way the government works sometimes, it gave us a bunch of mandates that we have to follow in order for a company, including schools, to get insurance. And right off the top, I got a list of a minimum of a dozen items from our insurance company that we have to follow. And if we do not, we lose our insurance. And I think this year we went through 19 applications to get insurance, so it was quite the process. And then of course, we just have regulatory, the other governments. A lot of the policy that you have in your packet is from NIST, the National Institute of Standards and Technology. That is the bulk of where I gleaned this policy from. And then we also looked at, or I looked at, the Minnesota IT Security Policies and Standards. And as well as the University of Minnesota policies, the federal CISA K-12 guidance policies that are part of that new legislation package in the Department of Homeland Security. And then the new Minnesota Data Privacy Laws and the rule book. So those are the sources that I primarily used to put the policy together. And then again, if you're, if you'd like more information as to why we need to do this, the Minnesota Department of Administration, the Data Practices Office, does have a YouTube channel that is listed up there. If you just go to YouTube and write Minnesota data, that's pretty much all you need. And the latest video from July 28th is there and you can watch it. And that's when the Minnesota State School Board Association joined with the Minnesota Department of Data or Administration. And they put on a, an independent presentation about data security in schools. And it was, it was an interesting to listen to. The other parts that I recently went to was the National K-12 Work Group, we're a part of that with CISA Security. And then the NIST Cybersecurity Framework, we intended that to help start laying down a more, a stronger framework for our district. All right, so, but here's the reality, all of that is good, the laws, the, the laws, the rules, the regulations, all of this. But here's the bottom line, in June of, of last year, we went and underwent a strenuous audit. And when the audit came back, the results were bad. That is on a scale from 350 to 850, we were poor. To put it in, in more perspective, you can see the little line up there that's just over the red, oh, that's us. So we have some work to do.
Was this the FR Secure Audit that was done?
Yes. And the one right below it is the basic where we should be for all industries. And you can see that all industries, I believe, is like 618. And school districts, there it is, 619.40. And school districts, there it is, 619.46 is the standard across all industries. And for school districts, the goal for schools, K-12 schools, is supposed to be about 660. So, you can see that we're not there. So, that's the primary reason to replace our old policy and put it in place with this one that is a Rockford policy, so that we can catch up. And then maybe in a few years, when we achieve that goal, we can then, you know, do away with it. So, when we look at just the administrative controls side of it, these are the side, the parts that the policy that I, that I'm asking the board to approve is, it accompanies, it accompanies these areas in particular. And these are the scores that we received back in our audit. Risk management, information security governance, which is the policy, human resources, asset management, access control, encryption, security operations, incident management, business continuity, and compliance. And those are the results of the audit. That was about a year ago. I haven't really discussed it until now with the public, because we've done a lot of work since then, and I know our scores are around that blue line. I didn't want to discuss it, because I didn't want to encourage anybody to knock on their door. So. So, part of it is that I've written a bunch of action plans for the insurance companies, and I know it's a little bit small, because I kind of clipped it and put it in. But these are just some of the action plans that I've written for backups, Google backups, our Security Operations Center, encryption protocols, all of your laptops are encrypted, et cetera. Risk management, employee awareness, training, logging. All of these things are stuff that we've worked in particular to improve upon over the last year. And this is just, I know it's real small, but I just wanted to kind of point out that our action plans follow the strategic plan and the action plans that they put out for us to use for them. So, again, it's super small, but the point is that this is kind of what it looks like. And, so that we try and follow the recipe that the strategic plan put out some time ago. After, after the information security policy is approved, if you choose to, then the next layer would be what I call the protocols. And this would be the first protocol going out, which is our information security program. It just basically gives an overview of how we're going to follow the policy and do the policy. And, and that there's a lifecycle for the work that we're doing. The protocols would be reviewed by committee, that we would start a technology advisory committee, which would be comprised of most likely a board member or two, a public person, some teachers of technology, and other administrators. So, we wanted to be a, a well-rounded board, so that we can get our committee, so that we can get ownership and put value out there and build trust. And of course, the superintendent and myself would be on that committee to help get advice. And then again, this is a little bit small, but these are some of the protocols that I've already written or that we've sent to insurance companies. So, you can see that we're well underway in achieving these. These are the ones that are mandatory, that we had to give something out, because without it, we wouldn't have any chance of getting insurance or starting to become compliant. So, the next step would be, next month, I hope to send you the first reading. During, if you agree that I should move forward with this and the policy that you have, then the next step would be to present it to the DAT, District Administrative Team, and the supervisors, and then send it to legal, so that the school attorneys can have a look at it as well. And then after that, we can bring it back to you next month for the first reading, and then follow it the next month with the second reading. And then we can put all these policies or protocols into play. Any questions or further discussion as to kind of the vision or the plan that, that we have, that we want to follow with your approval?
I got a question. Surprise, 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 got a question.
Go ahead.
So, I've worked with FR Secure in the past, and that's why, probably the only reason anybody that's sitting up here remembers the name of that company. I'd mind it. The company I worked for writes software, and they audited us in the past as well as an independent auditor. One of the big takeaways that I had from that process of undergoing an audit with them is the policy establishes good protocol or procedure, which then creates the evidence for a successful audit. How does the policy that you've presented create that traceability between policy down to evidence? You know, the last one is like 15 pages, and it covered like credit card security and it's all sorts of junk that an information security policy generally doesn't. But this one is four pages. It's much more streamlined. How do we make sure that it encompasses ultimately links to all of your, your action items that you have up here?
Yes, I have a, a gathering of policies from FR Secure. And over the years, the first audit that I went through with them, oh gosh, several years ago, when it was just kind of starting out. And there was a group of us who would go to FR Secure in Minnetoka. And I think now they're in Minnetoka. And we sat down with cities and some businesses. And I think there's just been another twist in the schools, and we wrote most of those policies back then.
Did you work for them back then?
Nope, but I got them for free.
I hope, I hope you got paid a little bit, man. I've gotten that pack of policies too.
So, and then recently, I got the new one. So, a lot of the stuff that we're doing is heavily plagiarized from them. But, but then it also goes back and incorporates the NIST and, and CISA policies, and with that, and then I've got the MNIT policies that I kind of go over the top one more time to look at.
So, all those get referenced in kind of this, this master
Yes.
policy that you're proposing? But I looked at it, and I, I mean, I didn't spend, you know, an hour reading it or anything, but.
So, so this one, the, the main policy that I'm asking from the board is just an overview that flakes everything together. And that allows us to create, like, the old policy that was 10 pages long?
15, yeah.
15. It allows us to create those subsections on our own as protocols. And we send them to the advisory committee. I don't want to say they bless it, but they tell us if we did okay or not, or if they agree with it, and that it's community-based, and then we implement them. And then we can change them on the fly, because technology changes so fast. Or who knows what the next terrible thing will be?
Great. That, that was what I was after, is that this paper way for the detailed
Protocol.
Protocols and whatnot.
And, and I may not post, I might probably don't post them on
I don't think it looks any public, no.
But we put them on a, in for a website, so that you guys and the staff can see them.
Great.
Just when publicly post that.
Yeah. If you need a, a board member to participate until December 31st, I'd be happy to as a board member thereafter as a member of the board, in your technology advisory committee.
I appreciate that.
You got it.
So, any other questions or discussion or? I think I kept it under seven minutes.
I do have a quick question, just when I was reviewing the policy. So, so from a process perspective, this was not a first read. That was a, this was a preview, is what I think I heard you say.
Yes.
Like, because you want to give us a foreshadowing, that you'd like to create an overarching policy, et cetera. Next month will be the technical first read between now and then. If the board gives the nods of like, directionally, this feels, not a vote, but just directionally, this feels okay, or whatever, it'll go to DAT, it'll go to legal, it'll do all of those things prior to it coming back for the actual first read. Okay.
And if you have the opportunity to read it, and you say, let's, let's make a change.
Yeah.
Before it goes back to me. So, this is that, it gives us an opportunity to, to, you know, community-wide review of what goes.
Yep.
It is a Rockford policy.
Yeah, and it helps us see your vision of where you want to go. I appreciate Mr. Anderson's questions tonight about then, does this create the framework for protocols? Protocols would not come into the board for formal governance approval. That's more in the technology and.
Altogether, there's like, two dozen protocols. And some are, I don't want to say simple, but like change logs. I create a change log and monitor those, and all the way up to incident management plans, which are, and business continuity plans, which are a little more lengthy.
Cool.
So, because, for example, we've worked on, what if we have to bolt? And, and move school to a, just point at the map and go, how do we provide communications there? And we figured out how to create school outside of school.
Well, that sounds good.
For example, that's part of the business continuity parts.
Good. So, with that in mind, the one thing that jumped out at me when I was reading the policy that I wasn't quite sure if we were talking about is in Section 3, Functional Responsibility and Requirement, executive management is responsible for. And I wasn't quite sure who executive management is. Is it our DAT team? Is it our? Who, who is that? And so, maybe in the reading, it's, it'll be different.
My interpretation when I wrote that was, a lot of times, they'll throw a chief information security officer, a CISA position. Well, we don't have that, and we're not that big. We don't necessarily need that. We wear multiple hats. But the principals, the business manager certainly, and the human resources manager, the superintendent, myself, the principals, all of that would be the executive management. Because in, in our respective departments, we've got a lot of data that needs to be, have better emphasis on taking care of it. Because as you can see from those numbers, we weren't doing so good. And as you know, it happened as a result of that. So.
Yeah. So then my only feedback for the first read for consideration is to, like, what you just said makes total sense to me.
Yes.
Like, and so now, now, if that was written in the, in this policy, it would be more of a standalone versus being like, what, now who does that apply to? So, if there's a way to, like, clean that up, so we know who it applies to, that would be awesome.
I can clean that up.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? And, oh, yep, so we're going to do.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. First of all, I just wanted to also thank Jeff. Shortly after he came on board, I had asked about the FR Secure audit. I actually started looking into it beforehand. And when I mentioned it to Jeff, that there was no apprehension at all, it was like absolutely, yes, we need to do an audit. And even when the results came back and we saw the results, it was our baseline data. So, for, for, for me, it was, we build from there. And Jeff has really taken on that, that mantle and has just, has just moved it along. And so, I thank Jeff for, for, again, leaning in. We have a great team in Rockford. We really do. And I hope the board knows that. And I think you see it when, when the board, when members of the DAT team come forward, that we really do have some great, great folks leading our districts.
And I, I was on the board of ECMEC a few years back, and one of the things we worked on there was creating ECMEC to do FR Secure. So, ECMEC is, and their network administrator, she is an extension of FR Secure, and she's able to do all the surveys and et cetera. And the cost the next time around will be a fraction of what we think is lost.
When is the next audit? Just out of curiosity?
I'm hoping, I just received my Google audit back from an independent agency, AmplifyID. I got that track last week, and I'm going through that. I'm hoping that once we get this in, in playing, get the protocols out. I would hope April, maybe?
Great.
Because I like to do it when there's people here, if you are report scanning. And it's nice to have lots of traffic for port scanning.
Great.
Yeah, the beauty of FR, FR Secures are local. When we were searching for companies who were, you know, other states, but.
Yes. They started in Oconia, moved to Minnetoka, and now they're in Diamond. Anything else?
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next. Moving on to item number 7C, which is our annual review of selected policies. Just as a reminder, this is a second read. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Yes, Chair Edwards, thank you. So, yes, you've seen these policies now, two, two, two months in a row. This is a second read. We did not receive any feedback or adjustments from any board members. And so, we're presenting this slate of policies. Pardon? Oh, so we're presenting this set of policies for, for action.
Perfect. With that, I would entertain either additional comments from the board or a motion. Yep. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
I just wanted to share that Superintendent Dean invited me in a couple of weeks ago to kind of go over upcoming policy reviews. And they could be the technology one. And just a heads up, that next month, we're going to get another slate of policies for our first read, and then we'll have a second read in October. And then we'll have another set in November, December, and then January, February. So, just a heads up that they've been dividing them out and getting them all ready for us. So, we're reviewing those policies.
Thank you, Jessica, for your leadership and partnership with the district in looking at all the policies and helping to get that slate put together and elaboration. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few changes coming out of MSBA as it relates to just language in the policy. And so, thank you, Director Johnson, for mentioning it. We will, we will be bringing a slate of policies almost every other month, new policies to look at.
Every month or every other month?
Every other.
Every other, okay. Sounds good.
Through the first of the year, so, yeah.
Sounds good. And then we'll be cut up with all of our policy reviews.
We'll be up to date for the next annual review cycle. Wait, the next annual review!
We'll get enough done for this year to get another slate done next year.
Nice.
And we can't do all policies every year. We would have no other board meeting but policy.
Right. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Great. With that, any other comments related to our policies? If not, this is a second read. It is open for action this evening, and I would entertain a motion.
Eric Gordy, I make a motion to approve the annual review of selected policies that are listed in our board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. I have a first. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Beth.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. I have a second. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing no further discussion or comment requested, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, moving on to item number 7D, which is our safe learning plan. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. So, what you have in front of you in your board packet is our safe learning plan for the 2022-23 school year as it stands today. We had our, our nurse, Becca Morgan, review our plan, review this plan. And we are bringing it forth for action, because we will be starting the school, of course, before we meet again. But I would like to say that there is a nurses' meeting scheduled for next week. So, there might be some tweaks to this policy, so we might be, or, no policy. So, we plan, I should say. So, we might bring it back. We haven't, according to our school nurse, there hasn't been anything said out loud in terms of any mandates or requirements coming from MDE or MDH as it relates to our safe learning plans. So, again, we'd like to bring this forth for action, so we can have something to, to send out to our families as it relates to safe learning plan. However, something comes up of significance next week during the nurses' meeting, then we might bring this policy back again for, for an update. But again, we wanted to, to post something to our families prior to day one. A couple of other things that are not listed on this plan, of course. Really, just one thing significant is the health office, along with talking with the other nurses. We will not be hosting a dashboard this year. Most schools have moved away. I only actually know one school in the state that is continuing, is going to continue with their dashboard. There might be others. I just know one personal, personally. But we are going to move away. But we are going to move away from hosting a dashboard and keeping track of that data. Some of the reasoning behind that is so many people are testing at home, and they're not reporting it like they used to. So, just information for information.
Sounds good. Any, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Otherwise, it is an action item this evening, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the safe learning plan as written in the board packet.
Thank you, I have a first from Ms. Prescott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Nealon, I have a first and a second, any further discussion or comment? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we are moving on to item number eight, which is our board and superintendent updates and announcements. If staff are here that came for, you know, the first part of the meeting to present, you certainly can stay or you can go. It is up to you, you won't be called upon any further this evening. So I will jump into item number eight A. Work session is next scheduled on Monday, August 29th at 6:30 PM here in the RCC. We then also have a work session on September 19th at 5:30 PM. Currently, the location is to be determined. I know there is consideration potentially of moving the board meetings back to the DO, potentially, depending. So we'll see, and we'll learn more about that. And then next, regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Monday, September 19th, 6:30 PM. Again, similarly, location is to be determined. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Krista, in all your extra time, would you mind sending out a calendar invite for our board meetings? Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, good call.
Chair Edwards, if I could circle back around to eight A, the work session next week. That is a work session, which is kind of our admin retreat, if you will. And so that will be with Ray Quainer. And what we'll send out to the board is a copy of our three, if you remember, our three-year district operational plan. I'll send that out tomorrow, tomorrow's Tuesday or Wednesday at the latest. So you can take a thorough look at it and start looking at those items that we maybe want to add, delete, move on to the next year. But those are some things that we'll be doing during the retreat next Monday. And we'll be right here in this room.
That sounds great. And in your planning with Mr. Quainer, do you know about how long? Because that'll be the sole agenda item, correct? About how long is the events going to last? Is it two hours?
It's scheduled for two hours, six hours, 6:30 to 8:30.
Sounds good, thank you. I know that just helps with our board members' planning.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, that'll be fun, that'll be good to recalibrate on that. All right, other questions or comments? All right, next, moving on to our board and committee updates. We'll start with Ms. Johnson.
All right, we've had principal negotiations. And we have had, we have not had 284. So, principal negotiations, teacher orientation, the new teacher orientation I attended last week, policy meeting, as I stated earlier, and Masico. I wanted to share with you, see if I can find it here. The business manager has left. And creatively, they have re-staffed the position. Their HR person has changed to like director of services. They've just kind of reallocated without costing Masico more money. So, and they've tapped into employees like talents, like what they're good at. Like, I don't know, the business manager's jobs, you know, this person can take on this stuff because they're really good at that stuff, and this person over here can take this stuff. But I thought it was just really unique how they thought it through very, very well. I feel very fortunate that we are in Masico. And our executive director, that's been in place now for a year, has done an outstanding job over there. We're very fortunate, very, very fortunate to have her leading Masico. And I'm actually excited to see how this works in this shift there for the type of program Masico is, with the type of, you know, for a co-op like that. And it might be something that other co-ops end up following as well, for their staffing as well, so. I think that is about it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Yeah, thank you. Handful of principal negotiation meetings, like Jessica said, no 284. A couple of facilities meetings, and just some organizational things with Northwest Suburban. No meetings, just signing papers and having fun.
President, right?
That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott.
Okay, the negotiations with Jessica and Eric. And there was a pre-meeting to get ready for today. And the new teacher orientation, which was nice. And just side note, one of our new teachers at the high school, my daughters, were made in Ireland. She came up and said, I know your daughter, I'm like, you do?
It was pretty good.
Good hire.
It's a tall world.
Yeah.
It is, it is.
Thank you, thank you for attending. Mr. Anderson?
No committee updates. I, once again, always look at in the consent agenda, our open enrollment consent item. Just a friendly reminder to everybody, we have net positive this month of five. So I know this is just kind of a random nugget for y'all, and I'm sure you all realize this too. But I think the question that I posed to this group is, so what? So what do we do about it? Right, we lost those, even though we, it was net positive five, we lost eight to both Delano and Orno. And that's the trend. That's what we most of the time lose kids to in our touch district. So I think strategically, the group at this table needs to think about, so what? What are we going to do about it? And that's perhaps part of the conversation for Monday. But anyways, so I'm going to continue to chart these numbers and challenge us to continue to ask, so what, about those numbers? Attended Rockford River Days, the pretzel bikes from the thing were amazing, the food trailer. And then, yeah, I think we're, I think, we're trying to, Ms. Danic left, organize some sort of a summer school, lake outing for some of the middle school kids from Maple Hills. So we'll see if that comes to fruition or not, so.
Awesome.
We'll see. No promises, there's a lot of algae right now, and it's super gross. So if that's the case, then, you know. Anyways, I think my wife's, that's been, she's helping to manage that. In other words, she's managing.
I think she's saying that. I'm saying myself, that means she's.
Yeah, yeah. She's enjoying her summer, you know.
That's awesome.
So we'll see if that happens. So anyways, that's it for Monday.
Pulaski's pretty cool, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, well, my vote isn't in Pulaski's.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon.
All right, well, I got to run a shift of the school's food trailer over River Days. So that was pretty cool, and the pretzel bikes were pretty good. And Beth made me go to a chamber happy hour last week. But it was good, it was a fun meeting. There was maybe at the peak of it, maybe 10 people or so there. And it was good conversation with a bunch of different people of different backgrounds. And it was cool to, it was interesting to learn about what's going on in the community. I missed one of those.
She signed my thing, she was my notary. So I'm like, hey, thanks for being a notary, you want to go to a meeting for me? Thank you. It happens to be a happy hour, I know it's on a tough ask.
Well, thank you. Just updates on my end, real similar to probably Beth, planning for this meeting and other things as well. And then just the facilities committees, I missed one because of vacation, I took a little vacation. But then had our nice one this morning. And just really appreciate how we're staying on top of all of the different projects in the district. And hopefully, I think one of our goals is to continue to bring things at the appropriate altitude to the board to foreshadow what's going on for some group thing, for some insight when that makes sense. And then also start firing up some of our community stakeholder conversations, you know, as we continue to have those conversations. So like once Jim and the team kind of start to figure out what is going on in the RCC floor, as an example, and once a solution is better understood, then if there's decisions around like, how might we use? And what does that need to look like? Then making sure that we've got some fingerprints on it to help inform from those that use, right, the space. So just really appreciate being a part of that group and the thinking that's happening. And again, looking forward to getting some of those community stakeholder conversations fired up when the time is right. Yeah, that's kind of my couple of updates there. Turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Don't give me that look. Okay. Seven minutes, wow, hard, loud. New teacher workshop week last week. I'm sorry that Dan left, and even though I know that they were excused to leave. But new teacher orientation went very well last week. We had approximately 13 or 14 new teachers, new staff, I should say. But it was very well received, it was over the course of two days. First day was a lot of benefits and technology. Second day was meeting their mentors and getting more into the classroom. But it was really well received by the new teachers. So I wanted to thank Rob and the rest of the presenters, which was almost everyone on the DAT team, technology, buildings and grounds, just talking about their different areas. But it was really well received and really well done. Staying on the subject of opening our schools, I want to invite the board to the district welcome back, which is on Tuesday of workshop week. On Monday of workshop week, the building principals will be hosting their staffs in their buildings. And so we're moving the district breakfast to the Tuesday morning. And so if you're available Tuesday morning, we're going to have breakfast from 7:15 until 8:00. And then from 8:00 to 9:00, we'll have a welcome in the auditorium. So yeah, I hope you can participate in that, that would be great. Even if it's just for breakfast, it's okay.
Is that next week or the week after?
Oh, I'm sorry, the week after, workshop week.
Okay, next week.
That is next week.
Oh, it's next week.
We're within 10 days of day one.
Sure you got that from me.
Some other standing items, some standing meetings, of course, this month. The AMSD meetings, I continue to participate in. The facilities meetings, along with the LTFM meetings. I'm meeting with Jim and Ryan even tomorrow morning. Since the last board meeting, we posted two DAT retreats, one just for the principals. And then on July 27th, we hosted a retreat for the entire DAT plus team. Again, reviewing our strategic planning, looking at those action cards. And of course, now we'll be meeting with the board on August 3rd. Continuing to work with negotiations with the principals and 284. We've been kind of at a, we haven't been moving as quickly as hoped. With Miranda, our HR specialist, being out, we're focusing our energies on opening our buildings and getting our staffing in place for day one. Some other things that I attended over the past month. I attended a pretty large MDE back-to-school event with Governor Walz and Commissioner Mueller, and just talking about the outlook for this school year. Didn't really have much of a legislative update. I don't think anything's going to happen on the legislative front in terms of a special session or anything like that. Don't see that coming. And I'm not too optimistic about any additional funding at this point. I was hoping that, especially in light of the tragedy that happened at the end of the school year down in Texas, I was actually hoping that the state would maybe allocate some safe schools funding for secure entries or badging or anything. But that doesn't seem like it's going to come to fruition. Attended the fall sports meeting. You know schools starting when you have the fall sports meeting. And it's always the biggest attendance, because it's the fall. And then it kind of trickles down after the winter, and then of course, the spring. Safe schools, so I think you know that we participate in safe schools meetings with Wright County. And it's a collaboration between the school district, which is the entire DAT team, the principals, the counselors, like our safety specialists. But we also partner with Hennepin County Courts, I'm sorry, Wright County Court System, and then Human Services. And so we all come together in this room every other month during the school year. But a couple of weeks ago, they had all the districts participate in a welcome back event at the Government Center in Buffalo. And it was well-attended, probably about 300 people in the room. And again, it was law enforcement, Health and Human Services, and the court representatives. So we will participate in safe schools again. Attended the Northwest Suburban Innovation School District Visioning Session with the director. Participated in the River Days Parade, that was the quickest parade I've ever participated in. We were right behind the band at the beginning there, and I think we were at Central Park by 30 minutes later. Quick pace, but it was a great parade, it was a really good parade. Participated in some SMART training. That's just been something that I've tried to keep my pulse on, just given the transitions and the transitions in the central office. And then again, working with Ray Quainer to prepare for the retreat next week. So it's a busy time of year, it's an exciting time of year. It was exciting to see the parking lot just getting refreshed, I love the refreshing of things.
We walked through the halls and all shiny.
I know. The floors are so beautiful.
You know, Jimmy's right, the floors are just like glass.
Making for that new teacher, when I was like, ooh.
I know. So pretty.
So that concludes my board report.
Thank you, any questions? All right, with no questions, that concludes item number eight B on our agenda. So moving on to item number nine, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a first from Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Nealon, I have a first and a second, any further discussion or comments? Seeing no further discussion or comments, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to adjourn carries unanimously, the time is 9:58, yeah. Everyone.
What time is it?
Sorry, the time is 7:58 PM, I'm so sorry, 7:58.
I was going to say, I've talked a long time.
I know.
I was exactly seven minutes.
Jenny, I think we have all the food covered that day. You were in the district truck, Jill was in the River Works, and I was filling workshop.
So you, wow.
That's awesome.
All fully covered.
That's awesome, I love it.